Hi, I'm Margaret Gifford.
And I'm Pat Thatcher. We're members of the team at Sotheby's International Realty in Falmouth. And Falmouth has been so busy with real estate.
Yes, it has. I've been so busy, I haven't had time to color my hair.
Margaret, that's way too busy.
I know.
Still, it's a great time for buyers because interest rates remain at historic lows.
And it's a great time for sellers because the inventory is so low.
Hmm, so that's increasing demand.
Yes, it is.
Don't you love Falmouth?
Remember, WC Communications is your printing team. We are calm and cool under pressure. You can call us at 508-563-7366 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's Budget Workshop Meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, the 2nd of January. If you all please join me with the Budge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to first begin by thanking all the department heads for coming this evening. Typically, we try to get this meeting off and running right after your work schedule, but to get all the members of the board here and to get all of you here, this was the most convenient time. I'm going to begin by starting off by letting the Town Manager make some opening remarks, and I'm sure Finance Director Jennifer Petit will also make some remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, thanks for the support and assistance in scheduling this budget work session so early in the new calendar year. And with that, Happy New Year to everyone. You have received a copy of the proposed FY14 operating budget and supporting documentation. And I do have a series of budget bullet points which I would like to walk through, Mr. Chairman, in summary. You've received a copy of those, and I'll just touch on them. And then, our Finance Director Jennifer Petit will be making some remarks as well. So, jumping in, I do want to thank the board again for this opportunity to discuss with you the proposed FY14 Town Operating Budget. I seek your comments, input, suggestions, and collaboration in moving forward in service to the public. I recognize that the board may wish to fine-tune portions of this budget proposal. Of course, you only received it very late in the day on Friday, and I welcome this dialogue with you. I and newly-appointed Finance Director Jennifer Petit look forward to working closely with the Finance Committee in the further revolution of this all-important budget process. And I know the board's familiar with that pursuant to the Town Charter. I do follow with some selected budget observations. First, this budget meets the budget policy approved by the Board of Selectmen, which includes a 2.5% growth from FY13 comprised of 2.25% dedicated to the operating budget and 0.25% for capital stabilization purposes. The budget accommodates modest but strategic growth in fundamental service areas while maintaining all basic Town services. This includes the functional merger of Harbor Master and Natural Resources into the new Department of Marine and Environmental Services, and we will hear from them yet this evening. The General Stabilization Fund continues to expand with a set aside of $440,000 in FY14. With the support of the Board of Selectmen, we were able to operate Wind One in beginning in April of this past year, and Wind Two on a 12-hours-on, 12-hours-off schedule, subject only to required maintenance downtimes. FY14 is the last fiscal year that wind energy receipts. We'll support the operating expenses of both Town wind turbines unless both Wind One and Wind Two are operating at full capacity and generating the requisite revenues. FY14 does continue to include a $106,000 general fund operating subsidy, as was the case in FY13. This net drain on the Town's general fund is not sustainable. The FY14 budget includes a full year of operations for the Integrated Finance Department and the Finance Director. It incorporates full-year funding of the newly-approved position of Deputy Public Works Director. The two school resource officer positions restored in the FY13 budget are continued to provide enhanced public safety to the school department. The budget also includes minor staffing position adjustments as part of the Marine and Environmental Services merger, which are subject to collective bargaining and ultimately both Board of Selectmen and Town Meeting approval. Modest public service hours are also restored in building and conservation. The overtime line items for the police and fire departments, both historically underfunded, have been modestly increased by $20,000 each. I am pleased to include $400,000 in what we call Category 1 capital spending in the FY14 budget. Among those more routine annual capital items in the operating budget are two police cruisers, water meter replacement, beach nourishment, fire department equipment and gear, computer equipment and software, and facilities maintenance. Continuing on page two, technology upgrades are continued for FY14, critically important to support all Town departments in enhancing efficiency and routine public service. The new Town-wide, including school department, financial systems, integrated software will be fully implemented during FY14, with a current anticipated cut over set for July 1st of this year. The budget includes collective bargaining settlements for library and public works employees as well as for non-union employees. Other collective bargaining negotiations are currently underway. We anticipate further settlements in the months to come, and, as in the past, we have provided for a general settlement reserve in the FY14 budget, consistent with those existing settlements already in place. The disciplined goal-setting program budgeting and collaboration with the Board of Selectmen and the administrative staff has been excellent, and it is critically important to continue this partnership. I acknowledge and thank my colleagues in service to the residents of the Falmouth community who have continued to step up during the past year to take on additional responsibilities in serving the public during a time of diminished resources. I am personally grateful for their leadership. I remind the board that pursuant to the Town Charter, the adopted FY14 budget is due to the Finance Committee on or before January 16th. In closure, I thank Finance Director Jennifer Petit for her many contributions to the budget process since her arrival on November 19th. I thank Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper for her continuing work in preparation for this budget. I also thank recently-retired Town Accountant Mary Ellen Alwark, Director of Assessing David Bailey, Town Treasurer Susan Ripley, and Town Collector Pat O'Connell for their consistent professional work as key members of Falmouth Finance Department. I thank my colleagues, the Town's Department and Division Heads assembled with us today for their continued extraordinary work and their critically important support of and partnership in all that we do. With your concurrence, Mr. Chairman, we can now proceed to a presentation on budget assumptions and funding sources from Finance Director Jennifer Petit. Also, we can entertain questions from the board, whatever would be your pleasure.
If the board has any questions as we move forward, I'd be happy to entertain them, but otherwise, I'll move right to Jennifer. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you. I just wanted to thank the members of the Finance Department who assisted us in putting the budget together, and also Denise Coleman in the Human Resource Department, that her help with the salaries was extremely helpful. This is my first budget presentation for the Town of Falmouth, so I'm excited about it. And so, what I'm going to do is, I'm just going to walk you through a budget worksheet that I put together that I find extremely helpful, that actually has the budget on four pages. I'd like to just have some opening comments regarding the budget process. I'd like to just go over, you know, just some funding sources, and, you know, we do this once a year. We don't do this all the time, so I'd just like to remind everybody, maybe educate people about, you know, what we're actually looking at in the operating budget. In Falmouth, you put together the operating budget in April, and that's really your reoccurring expenses, your operating budget. And really, the theme of what the Selectmen put together, and they voted on in November with their budget policy, is, you know, reoccurring revenue for reoccurring expenditures. So, right now, we are dealing with the reoccurring revenue and the reoccurring expenditures. And in Falmouth, you vote your capital budget in November. So, that is part of the budget process, but it's outside of tonight, so we will just talk about the operating budget. So, I'm going to put up the budget overview up here on the screen, and then just kind of walk you through it a little bit and take you through funding sources and budget.
Doug, could you just...
So, this is the budget worksheet that I actually put together. And let me start with the review for FY14. So, when I put this budget workbook together, I really look at what we voted in FY13, and I tie that up to the tax recap sheet and our tax rate, if you will, just to make sure that what we did in '13 is documented and it's right, because we build 14 on '13. So, we're going to look at, you know, our increases and possibly decreases. So, that's what I did here. And as you can see, over here, you have what was voted in '13. Now, this includes all the supplemental appropriations in November that would build on the budget. And then, we set our tax rate. And so, these are our requests for FY14, and then the Town Manager recommendations. It will tell you the monetary difference, and also you will look at the percentage increases and decreases. And so, I'll just kind of scroll down. You have all the backup in your budget, or also the program budgets, but this really does give you that snapshot of all the departments and the increases and decreases. And one thing I do want to point out, you received a new budget overview sheet this afternoon, and right here, we wanted to break out the Town insurance, the health insurance. And the budget worksheet that I prepared on Friday, this number was a little different. It didn't affect the bottom line or anything, but I just wanted to make sure that you had an updated recap sheet. So, these numbers are broken out and correct in the accounting, and that's the total amount of health insurance that was voted on in FY13. One thing I do want to point out is that, even though it looks like it's a small increase, what is in that line item is the mitigation fund that was voted when you adopted Sections 21 through 23 on the health insurance legislation. So, what we will do is, we will put a Town Meeting warrant article in, in the special to remove that money, and then, so there is more of a larger increase. But we really wanted to show the budgetary increases, because when the board voted in November, the specific instructions were 2.25% for operating budget and 2.25% for capital, and we did reach that goal.
Why weren't those things, like the capital stabilization, listed in that budget overview?
That's a great question. The reason is because we wanted to put in separate, well, we're proposing, this is flexible. One thing I do want to mention is this worksheet is flexible, it can be changed. This is what we're proposing. The reason why I took them out is because I was, we're going to put in separate Town Meeting warrant articles for the funding, and so, it's taken out of the operating budget. If I left it in here, the percentage increases get a little bit. So, I wanted to show apples to apples. And you'll see that on page one, how I pulled it out, and then you can see what we actually did with those savings.
Jennifer, you mentioned that all of these 2013 budget items include supplemental budget items.
Correct.
Under the school department, there was an additional appropriation of $300,000 at the Fall Town Meeting that was not to be added to the base. Is that added to this base?
No, it isn't, and thank you for pointing that out.
Okay.
I did not put it in here. I did in the beginning, but then I took it out because they didn't want it to be added to the base.
Okay.
We wanted to show the 2.25%.
Okay.
And one thing, and that's a great question, because the other theme of this workbook is really the reoccurring revenue. And the reoccurring revenue is from your raise and appropriate. And so, free cash was funding that supplemental appropriation for the school department, so that's why we took it out, because free cash, we only want to fund one-time expenses, so thank you for that.
Okay.
Any more questions on this sheet?
Yes, I have one. On the health insurance, when we started going through the change in what we did, I understood we were going to be saving some million dollars a year on our insurance.
That's correct.
Now, would that, what that number entails, that 11?
No, I'll show you the savings on the other page. There is some savings in there, but I'll show you how we allocated it.
Thank you.
Can you go down to the bottom line of this worksheet?
Well, that relieves the bottom, the last one, but you want to see the totals?
Right. I can make sense of the totals with the percentages and the...
Oh, there you go. You can see the totals at the top. I'm having a hard time trying to put it in the middle of the sheet.
Need you to stay with that microphone, even if you walk with it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, the far-left column is fiscal year 2013.
Yes.
Then, 2014 requests, and 2014 recommended. And then, the I column is the difference between 2013 and '14 of 2 million, but I don't understand where that 2 million's coming from. What subtraction did you do? I understood all the other places, subtraction was very clear, between F and H.
Okay.
But if we look at that bottom row, it's actually a difference of $10 million. If we compare F and E...
Oh, you know what that is? Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, sorry. When I, at the last minute, I broke out the health insurance for the school and the Town, and what that's doing is it's adding that up together for the bottom of FY13. And so, when I changed it, I didn't take it out. It doesn't affect the bottom line, but you brought up a good point, because I needed to break it out, but then... See how I have it right here?
Yep.
That's the total amount. These two add them together. So, when I actually did the formulas at the last minute, I needed to back out that total amount. Do you see what I mean?
Yep.
Because I was adding it in twice because of the breakout.
Okay, so Julian...
That's exactly what it is.
Thank you.
Now, I have a couple of questions, and I don't know whether it's you or Julian's point, but in regard to the health insurance...
Sure.
...and how we're effectively taking some money out of the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund. We don't know, in fact, whether we're going to use all that money, or it'll become free cash. It's in your budget recap to us on page three, Julian.
Right.
Maybe you could explain that a little bit more at length, how we're going to do that.
Yes, certainly happy to, and Jennifer and/or Heather can supplement at any point, but essentially, we budgeted for a 9% increase in health insurance, with the understanding that the actual increase, which we'll hear about, I believe it's in April of this year, from what Heather's confirmed, may bring in a lower rate of increase. The point there being that any difference between the 9% budgeted and the actual percentage increase, which may well be less than 9%, will just end up as free cash to the Town and be available for positive uses as a result. So, that is not money that would be lost in any way.
Okay, and then, my next question is, and probably with both of you, the 9% increase, is that coming from the Stable, Health Insurance Stabilization Fund, or is that coming strictly out of the budget?
It's coming strictly out of the budget. The thinking here really is, last year, when you had the savings, you voted and put it into a Health Insurance Stabilization Fund. The recommendation is to really keep that in the budget. When the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group meets and they set their rates, they set their, they look at what all the claims are, and then they say, "Well, maybe the rates are going to go up maybe 10% to 12%." That's the gross rates, if you will. And then, they meet, and then they have a fund balance, and they have their own fiscal policy, and then they vote to artificially decrease the rates. And that's basically the process that they've been using for a number of years. The recommendation is, is to fund the rates at the rate that the true rate increase will be, because if you keep artificially reducing it with the fund balance, you're subject to a really great increase at some point. And yes, you do have the 1.3 put away in the future for that. But if we fund it the way it's supposed to be funded, and then maybe at some point down the road, use a premium holiday, it's advantageous, because at the end of the fiscal year, you have it in your base budget, but the money gets closed out to free cash, and then you have that available for capital spending, a one-time revenue source for a one-time expenditure. And that usually is, my recommendation is a better way to handle it.
So, the only time we would be using the stabilization fund is in the form of appropriation for a supplemental budget for the health insurance?
My recommendation at this time is to keep it in the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund, but at some point, what we might want to look at if we're funding the true rate increases, is to maybe take that and vote that into OPEB. You know, maybe keep a little bit there, maybe not the 1.3, but funding what we really should be funding, and we want to get to our goal with the stabilization fund, fund a little bit more in OPEB, but really keep the rate increases in the operating budget, because it helps us, you know, with the free cash. And when bond rating agencies look at the Town, they want to see a few things, and one of them is planning. They want to see long-term planning, which you've done here, but they also want to see that you're planning for your reserves. So, if we plan for the health insurance increases in the budget, and then we can use that as free cash, and they can see our free cash being healthy, and how we're managing it on a year-to-year basis for the long term is really advantageous. And then, you're not just keeping a pot of money that's really not earning a lot of interest in a stabilization fund, because the rate increases fluctuate all the time.
Okay, all right. Pat?
Back to the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. They recommend an increase of 9%, and that's what we have in the budget. But, no?
Well...
I mean, at this point?
At this point, we think that the true rate increases will be around 9%, and that what they're looking at is using 2% from their fund balance to reduce it to 7%.
That's what I was going to ask you.
Yes.
It's their fund balance that they're using to lower the rates, which is, like you say, totally artificial.
That's correct.
Because that's not recurring, and it may never happen the next year.
That's correct.
Okay.
Heather? I guess I want to point out that we don't know what the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group's rates are going to be. They're doing their rate analysis right now. Now, their first rate sitting meeting will be in February. Expect those to be adopted in February or early March. So, this is really an estimate based on what we expect the experience to be. We certainly think the experience is going to be better, having adopted health insurance reform and the cost sharing between the subscriber and the group, but their claims are based on real claims of real employees and a real health claims experience. So, we won't know what that is until later in the year, but I endorse the practice that's being recommended to fully fund the health insurance and allow that, and because it's a concern I have as well, using that fund balance of the health group on a recurring basis creates an artificial scenario that is advantageous to the community and the ratepayers by holding the rates down. But in the long run, if there is a big hike or the fund balance isn't there, then both the municipality and the ratepayers could see a large increase. So, I think it's a really wise move at this time. I think we did the right thing last year by creating the Health Insurance Stabilization Fund, but given the opportunity to handle that in this year's operating budget, to do that now, so I think makes lots of sense.
And we had that same discussion today at CalA, and we made the same decision to fund it the same way, I was saying, for the very same reasons.
Okay. Doug?
I find it useful to know what our stabilization fund amounts actually are as we look at this.
Sure. Right now, you have about 2.3 million in your stabilization fund.
Is that split between general and capital?
Nope, that's just your general stabilization.
And about 500 in the capital from last year?
Right now, we have 520 in the capital stabilization fund, that's correct, and about 1.3 in your health insurance stabilization.
And our goal is 5% maybe?
Yes, the goal is 5% for the general stabilization was, I believe it's a little over 5 million. So, with this vote, you'll be almost halfway there. Any more questions on this sheet?
I have a question on the other sheet. Can I look at the other sheet now also?
Sure, okay. Would you like me to go through it, or would you like to ask a question?
I guess the question was about the sources of funding, the available funds from the CPA. I was just worried as to whether we are assuming that we were going to get with the Community Preservation Fund, was listed as being, and I wasn't sure we could be guaranteed we'd be getting money from the CPA. So, 1.7 million?
That's for the...
Is that for the land bank?
It's for the debt service.
Okay, great.
Yes, and you absolutely will. I did analyze that. I looked at that, you know, I've been looking at it, but it is your bonded indebtedness in the general fund, and it will be transferred. It really has to come off the top with the Community Preservation.
Okay, and so, that's within the expenses of...
That's correct.
...the debt, as opposed to anything operating related?
Yes, that's kept in a separate fund. I do want to say eventually, and it's a good time for me to say this, this worksheet will be expanded upon in the future years. So, you'll see more capital, free cash. I'd like to maybe put some Community Preservation Administrative expenses in the general fund. Then, you can see it. It's not in a separate fund, being voted separately. It can be voted as part of the whole budget, if you will, and everybody can see it at one snapshot. So, there'll be a lot more to come with this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, what I did here, and it's kind of the theme in your... So what I did here, and it's kind of the theme in your budget book, is I took the individual line, well, the departmental budgets, and I put them into functions. And as you can see right here, you have general government, public safety, public works, community development, community services, education, employee benefits, insurance and reserve and debt service. And really, this kind of mirrors the state, the Department of Revenue, the UMAS manual, if you will, Uniform Municipal Accounting. And we, when we report to the state every year on a Schedule A, we report on our revenues and expenditures. So it's really good to see where your budget is going by function. We all want to know what's going on with public safety or public work. So I actually organized it in this fashion. And in your budget book, you'll see it organized the same way. The town meeting articles, we discussed this earlier. Yes, this was voted as part of your budget in FY13, but I did pull it out to show apples to apples. So as you can see, you have your 520,000 last year voted into capital, and your 792. And I did a formula at the bottom of your spreadsheet according to your budget policy on how we did get to the 792. Your general stabilization, according to the budget policy, that would have been $175,000. That was .25% of your levy. But we wanted to actually put away more in reserve, so we level funded from the year before. You can see this is the first, well, the second time we voted $20,000 last year, but this year, we're voting $100,000 into your OPEB trust. That, funding your OPEB isn't a requirement right now. It is put on your financial statements, but the bond rating agencies, what they look at is that the other communities are funding OPEB. So that's, we really kind of want to stay in the middle because the liability is so huge, you're never really going to get there. And especially with the trust funds, you're not earning a lot of interest. But this really comes into the planning stage with standard emporers, you know, who you use to get rated. And so they want to see that at least you're planning for the future. And as part of the retirement, too, you look at your retirement assessment, you also have an unfunded liability in your retirement assessment as well. And they just want to make sure that we're talking about it, we're funding it to some extent like the other communities are. So you will see that.
Is there a number that we're looking for that really should be in the account? What number were we hitting? Was it 30 million, I was told?
A lot more.
A lot more?
Yeah.
Yeah, the liability is a lot, is a lot more than that.
All right.
But again, they just want to see that, you know, you're somewhat planning for it. And this, actually, they just came out, there's a commission for, it's GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board. And I believe they just came out with, or the state came out with more recommendations to kind of change the method of the actuarial valuation, which might lower your OPEB liability because it is so huge. But at least we're showing what the liability is on our financials, and this way, we're funding it somewhat. And then, as you can see, and then it was discussed in the budget message, is your capital operating budget. What we decided to do is to put money into your operating budget. Although, it is a separate line item under town meeting warrant articles, it is part of the operating budget because we are using your raise and appropriate, if you will. And so we put line items in there for your building, facilities, maintenance, water meters, and you can see them, you know, detailed out in the budget message.
Jennifer, can I ask you a question while we're here? These two, the stabilization fund and the capital stabilization fund, are those, do those numbers include the percentage of the meals tax?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yeah. And if you can see, and let me just scroll down to the bottom of the sheet.
I saw that, I just didn't know how.
And that's according to your budget policy, and that is the meals tax right there. The meals tax is the 525. And then the rest of it, the .25 is from your tax, that amount is from your tax levy with the inflationary factor. So, and as we go down this road, and in November, you'll see more town meeting warrant articles. I tend to, you might not, but when I propose something to the town manager, I tend to, I like town meeting warrant articles. And the reason why I like them, and I should say this since we're talking about reserves, is that when you, when you vote a separate town meeting warrant article, you know, say it's for your facilities maintenance, if you will, you usually won't close it out at the end of the year because if you have some money left over. So if you have a year where you have a lot of things go wrong in these buildings, you will deplete that. But if you don't, you can roll it over to the next year. And it needs to be managed absolutely internally. But the bond rating agencies like that because that is a reserve. So we are planning for, you know, unforeseen expenditures, especially when it comes to, you know, buildings, because you don't know what could go wrong or anything like that. So I tend to propose that, but I've only been here six weeks, and we can all be flexible, and I just thought I'd mention that. So I do tend to propose more town meeting warrant articles, just to show a reserve.
So that's in lieu of saving it and using it as free cash?
Exactly. You could, you can save it. And then what happens, and it's actually worked well for me in the past. So if we're funding facilities maintenance to the tune of 1, 150 a year, and then you have a year that you might be only spending 100, so you roll over the 50, and then you have a year where you have an economic downturn, your free cash is low, motor vehicle excise came in short, your building permits aren't up there, you know, then we can fund it at like maybe 50, and they can still, you know, do what they need to do with the buildings and the facilities maintenance. But it just needs to be managed internally, make sure, you know, you have certain internal procedures that you're following.
Go ahead.
Just a point. The items that are proposed as capital operating budget, most of those, in fact, I think all of them really date back to 2002, when the state came in with their budgetary cuts of $2 million. And the town and founder made some decisions about how to meet that budgetary gap mid-year. And we made substantial reductions in what you're seeing for articles, water mains and meters, facilities maintenance. Some of those basic items have previously been part of the town's annual operations, their recurring expenses, their expenses you'll see year after year. So even though they have the word capital in front of them, it's really because they were shifted from the operating budget to the capital budget now 10 years ago. And it's really just the program of replacing them and putting them back where they belong in a very slow and methodical way.
But a question here, we have some money in here for a couple of cruisers. Last time we appropriated money for cruisers, it was a town meeting warrant article. This is in the budget. We still haven't got those cruisers. This time around, if we don't get those cruisers within a year, money's gone. It goes back into, if we're not mistaken, goes back into free cash, right?
If you make it, and that's what I think probably is up for discussion. If you put this in your operating budget when you vote, I don't know what article it is, but you know, have all your line items, yes, if it would, or you can encumber it. If you have a contract out there and you've ordered the cruisers and they haven't come in yet, you can definitely encumber that in your budget. So you don't have to close that out to free cash.
Okay.
As long as that you've started.
I didn't want to lose, lose what we appropriated.
No, you wouldn't.
It's held within encumbrance.
Okay, okay.
Process, right.
And the difference here is having them as articles, but planning for them in the April annual town meeting is you're planning for them as a recurring expense using your reserve.
And I know town meeting would much prefer to see that because it is part of the operating budget.
That's correct. So those are town meeting articles. What else I put on the spreadsheet that you usually don't see are the appropriations that you actually have to raise when you set your tax rate, but doesn't have to go to town meeting. But we have to account for them. And those are your assessments right here, your county assessments, state assessments. And so I put an inflationary factor in there, and also your overlay, your allowance for abatements. Last year, we raised 695, so we look at about 650. I think 350 will come right off the top with exemptions every year. But this is something that next year, when we have a rebel year in FY15, we'll probably might want to even bump that up even more because when we have a full revaluation, you tend to get more abatements. And these numbers become flexible when you actually set the tax rate. This is where it will give you some room. If, if these come in shorter, then, you know, this just becomes a rounding factor in your tax rate. Is the best way to explain it. But I also, you know, want to show them. And what the offsets are, are your school choice, your school lunch, and your library. They come in on what's called the cherry sheet. And the cherry sheet comes in is really what the budget that is voted by the legislature. You'll get a preliminary cherry sheet when the House votes at the end of January, and then the governor submits his budget in the Senate as well. And then they become final. And so this money is seen on the cherry sheets, but they go to a separate fund, so they don't go into the general fund. So we look at them as, we have them as the revenue, and then we have them as an appropriation for an offset. But at least you can see them there.
Jennifer, I don't know whether it comes under your office now, but in the last several years, it was one of those years that we left roughly $300,000 on the table when we set the tax rate between the levy. In other words, we didn't go to the full 2.5% on the levy.
Right.
I just hate to do that again in the future, especially when we have to continue to go back to fund articles and town meeting. We have the ability to raise and appropriate to the 2.5%. I surely would hope that we'd do that.
We absolutely do. And this is, and I'm glad you brought that up because with the spreadsheet, I always, this is the framework, if you will. So when we go to set the tax rate, and I'll get into the funding sources in a minute, I look at our estimated receipts. And what I tend to do is decrease the estimated receipts in order to make up for that shortfall because you have to look at where your free cash is coming from. You want to have a healthy free cash. It's your actual receipts over estimates, so you want to lower them. And it also comes from budget turnbacks. So we want to manage the bottom line, and that's another way to manage the bottom line is to make sure we're taxing up to that full authority. But I will tell you, when you do set the tax rate, there is a rounding factor. So say you're within a penny or a half a penny, you might be leaving at times $60,000, $70,000 on the table only because you have to, because if you don't, then you're going to go into a negative. It's just a mathematical equation. But we do, I do monitor that very closely. I take it from the beginning, and then I take it to the end, especially when, and that's the end part of it, is when we set the budget for the tax rate.
Agreed.
So then we have our total appropriations up here. So this is everything that we're appropriating through the budget process, through some town meeting warrant articles, but it's really through your raise and appropriate. So the total increase will be 1.28%. And so let me talk about funding sources for a minute. You have four major funding sources with the operating budget, your reoccurring revenue, if you will. It's your property tax, your state revenue, your local receipts, and available funds. Now, the property tax, and I actually calculate the levy for you in the spreadsheet, which is right here. We have our base from FY13. We have our 2.5% increase. We have a new growth estimate, and then we have our debt exclusions right here. And then we have the Cape Cod Commission. Part of the, of the Cape, the assessment with the Cape Cod Commission is, you're allowed to raise that over your 2.5. So that's what we did last year. That might change a little bit, but it will be a little bit of a rounding factor. So let me talk about the DE1 for a second. It's the debt exclusions. It's a list that goes to the state of all your ballot votes that were debt excluded through all the years that were still paying debt on. This is the net amount. And the budget policy really is to make sure that you're keeping your levy steady. You don't want it to go down too much, and you don't want to spike it too much. So now we're going to talk about the window of opportunity we've all discussed. So when the debt drops off, it creates a window, so we want to put in new debt. So what is in part of this DE1, and that can change a little bit, is $1.7 million for the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. We are going, we have out there right now a million-dollar note. We will pay that off in '14. And we're also going to borrow an additional $700,000 to keep the levy up and to finish that project next year. We'll probably borrow that three to six months and pay it off, and then that will make sure that it stays levy. So you look at, our levy increase will be the 2.5 million, which is really this right here.
That's, that's already funds that were appropriated by town meeting, right?
Yes, it was voted, when you voted debt exclusion, you're voting for the borrowing. What happens in the finance department is really when we're managing a project, when to borrow, how long to borrow? Do we want to start off with a short-term note? I tend to do long-term borrowings every two years because there is a cost of borrowing. If you're going, when you go out and do a long-term borrowing over 20 years, 15, 20, 30 years, the cost is about $80,000, $90,000. So I don't do, I don't go out for a long-term borrowing every year, although I do monitor the interest rates. So you're monitoring cash flow from the project, interest rates, cost of borrowing. We've been getting large premiums over the last few years, so we want to make sure we're using those premiums against the cost of borrowing. So we take all those factors in. Meanwhile, we have to manage the levy and make sure that it doesn't spike or decrease at a great rate according to, you know, the fiscal policy. And so going into state revenue, according to the budget policy of the Board of Selectmen, was to plan for a 5% decrease, which was approximately $300,000. And it came up to about $249,000. When I did the 5% increase, I looked at Chapter 70, the general government aid, and your state-owned land. When the state decreases local aid, those are the three revenue sources that they decrease right away and they'll look at right away. They might change the formula for Chapter 70. Veterans benefits exemptions, they don't really touch those too much. So I did the 5%. Actually, the total increase is 337. So the $29,000 in the state-owned land. So I planned for that. Right now, there's, Governor Patrick is going to the legislature to look at cutting 1% of general government aid this current fiscal year. But that means the town and founder is about $11,000, so you really offset there. There's really nothing to worry about. If they do decrease it in FY14, I think the receipts are starting to come back up a little bit in their, well, their projection for FY14, I think, was a little bit more favorable than it might have been a couple of months ago. But if they don't decrease it to 5%, that's when what I would do is I would decrease your estimated receipts. And so then that will generate the free cash. So I think 5% is good. I wouldn't go any higher than that right now. Your local estimated receipts, I've level funded them. You can see in FY13, it was the 1804 projected, and that's what's been recommended. I've looked at your end of November estimated receipts. You look healthy, but I wouldn't even mind decreasing them a little bit more. But right now, they look pretty good. You don't have any problem areas. Your motor vehicle excise, your commitment doesn't go out until January, so it's really kind of hard to gauge that. Your licenses and permits are doing pretty well. So I didn't see a need that we had to decrease them. What I'm hoping is that state aid comes in level. I mean, the MMA is going to fight for that, and then we'll just flip that to the estimated receipts.
Are we able yet to monitor our local estimated receipts on a monthly basis?
Yes, I do monitor them on a monthly basis. It's a report that we generate from the software system.
Okay.
But I do monitor them. I just looked at November. I'll probably look at, you know, December just ended out. It's always good to look at the six month. But I didn't see any trouble spots at all. And your other available funds. Your other available funds are monies that go into another fund that you use to support some parts of your operating budget, but mostly debt. So you have your parking meter fund, your embarkation fees, and wetlands funds. And those funds right there do support a portion of the operating budget. One thing that I do look at with those funds is that we want to make sure that we're bringing that money in every year. Not that we just have a huge balance and that we're using it every year to support the budget because then you're going to run out and you run into a problem. So we bring that in every year, and I did look at that. Your water waste fund, I'd like to point out, you were using that in previous years, and you were decreasing that because that was supporting the operating budget. As of this year, it no longer does support the operating budget, so your water waste fund can support your capital only and some debt. And the Title V, that's debt, that's being, money being brought in from another fund to support your debt. Town manager addressed your energy receipts in your, in the budget message, and your road betterment, golf revenues, community preservation fund, and your bond premiums and your water waste fund. That all will support your debt in the general fund. So as I stated, and just to wrap up, this sheet will grow, and we'll put more information on it. You know, we'll deal with capital. You know, we'll deal with capital. Usually, we're dealing with capital, free cash. The Capital Advisory Committee has been meeting. We've been working with them. So, any more questions?
I don't have a question, Jennifer. Just in going through this exercise with you, I find it extremely valuable because, at least for us, from our perspective, just looking at departmental budgets in and of themselves don't really tell us a whole lot, but by being able to really more, more fully understand the big picture, it helps, I think, on this end to really see how this fits in with all of that. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I think we'll find that more valuable as time goes on.
Thank you.
Yes, it's got to come to me.
On the capital budget that you've, which I've always felt like things like cruisers or replaced computers should be an operating budget, not a capital, and I'm glad to see it, but it has its own line item. So what do we do, like, we put it, does it go into our budgets and then increase it, or when you buy, like, something, it has another account number or something like that? Did you get my question?
Jennifer, you might be able to answer that better than anybody else.
Sure, we will set up an account number for that, and we will let you know what that is. Right now, this is more of a presentation of how we want to handle the capital, so that particular part of it, of what account number would be, what department it would be, just hasn't been decided just yet. But there is money in there for, I believe we have money in there for IT.
I think the question was, when we go to town meeting, will it be one capital line item, as you see here, or will it be, I think there are five or six different capital projects that that $400,000 is going to fund, and will it be within the police department, two cruisers, within the beach department, beach nourishment, and each of those will have capital line items? Is that?
I'll answer the question. I think we kind of, well, I kind of left it flexible. I'd like to see it as a separate town meeting warrant article, so we can carry it over from year to year. That's what my preference would be, but also, I wanted to, I guess, we wanted to get the input, and I, Julianne and Heather might have some other thoughts. I mean, we talked about it generally. If we have a separate capital line item, you'll see it in the accounting system, is under the budget as a separate town meeting warrant article, and that way it gives us the flexibility to carry it over year to year. But again, I'm not too, I haven't started really presenting to the finance committee, trying to get their feeling on it, or how town meeting looks at these things, but that would be my preference.
One, one thing we did learn at the most recent town meeting is that town meeting does want to see the detail of how things are going to be spent, within, you know, within reason.
And with the town meeting warrant article, they will see that detail.
Okay.
It will be, it will be explained more.
Yeah, and I think we should emphasize, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that that's also subject to a significant discussion with the finance committee that, of course, is yet to come and to further unfold, so they'll have an important role in that as well.
How would you like to proceed? Do you want to go through the individual budgets, or?
Well, the thought was if the board would be agreeable that we would have a presentation from a couple of our departments in terms of illustrative examples of what we have in front of us, and that would be, if that's, again, agreeable, we could go through individual details if the board would prefer, and then follow it with some departmental presentations or do the departmental and follow up in the other order. So truly strictly what the board would prefer, but I know that Harbor Master, Greg Fraser, of course, is prepared to make a presentation on our merged Department of Marine and Environmental Services if the board would desire to see that next.
Well, go ahead.
Well, I just have a question in the question narrative, on, which is page one and under the first paragraph on revenue. At the last sentence says, it talks about weaning the operating budget from the waterway improvement funds.
Yes.
And the last sentence says, this enables the town to rely on that water waste improvement account solely for capital needs. Is that capital needs for waterways or capital needs for the town?
It's limited to waterways.
To limited, that's what I wasn't sure about.
Correct.
How about we do it this way, that we go through the individual departments, because I'm sure that some people might have some questions, and then when we come upon the department managers that you would like to see a presentation from, it might be appropriate to have them get up and you can give me a heads up. There are some, some areas that, that some members of the board may have some concerns with or questions about.
One more question, because it's, I wasn't going to ask it, and then I said it's still bugging me. On this sheet here, under budget, under the FY '13 voted by town meeting, on this sheet here, the one that you have here, under the first column, FY '13 voted, says 110, 774, 330. Then when you go to the other page, which are the departments, the bottom line is 122.
That's the health insurance.
Oh, yeah, it relates to your question. Okay.
Added up in.
Okay, fine, thank you. I cannot make that reconcile. That's okay.
Okay. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess, being new to this, I'm still, at what point do we, I mean, the finance committee is going to go through this with the fine tools column also. Is it more appropriate that they do that before we do, or we do it first and then?
We send over to the finance committee a budget, and then they do some analysis and come back with their recommendations. So it's, you know, the, we're actually the horse that came before the cart.
Okay.
In this situation. We have to get it to them by the 15th of January, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
David, did you have a question?
I have one on here, but I'll wait till you get to the departments.
Okay, so why don't we just go down there, because some folks might have some questions on individual departments.
Mr. Chairman, did you want to go tab by tab?
Yeah, why don't we do that if the.
Yeah, we'll certainly do that. The first one is the town meeting tab in the, in the favoring.
If anyone has a question on any one of these, please just.
On this list here?
Well, we're going to get out through the departments. It's still similar to the same list. So if you want to go through the detail, or do you want to get out just the list?
I just have a question.
Yeah, that's, I mean, they can highlight it, or you're exactly right, because at least you can see the, the detail. First one would be town meeting. Town moderator. And again, Mr. Suso, if you have a department head when we get to any one of these that would like to make a presentation, we'd be happy to hear from them.
Well, we have two specifically that were designated, as I noted, Greg Fraser on behalf of Marine and Environmental Services, and Bob Shea for GIS, so.
Okay.
Specifically in those two cases. And of course, all department heads are here and available to answer questions that the board may have and provide supplementary information that might be helpful.
Okay, so we'll go through them as soon as we get to that department, we'll do those presentations.
Very good.
Selectmen's office. Finance department. Is the town accountant.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go right ahead.
The only question I had was on the increase of almost 34%, 159,000.
Which one are we talking about?
Town accountant.
Okay.
Now, if that is good, and I get a suspicion someone's going to tell me that increase is because of salaries, and if it is, I was just told continually when I was approving this department that we was being paid for by two one-filled positions, and I'd like to get a clarification.
Sure.
Go.
In the, last year in FY '13, there was a money amount of $250,000 that was set aside for, for salaries in a separate lump sum. And so this year, we're setting aside $434,000 for, for the cost of living increases, even though we don't have settled contracts, but that's the amount we're setting aside. And we set it aside in the town accountant's budget. It's a separate line item.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Well, I did, but now I know the answer. Thank you very much.
We've done that each of the last two years, a settlement reserve for future contract settlements that have not yet been concluded.
We just charge that to the accountant.
Correct. It goes, it sits in the town accountant's budget for utilization if a settlement arrives.
At first, I thought it was the sewer discharge settlement, SW settlement reserve, and I thought, no, that's, that wasn't as much as that.
Collective bargaining.
Okay, the assessors' office.
Do we know how much of that, I guess we don't, we're still in halfway through 2013, so knowing we've expended of that doesn't do us any good at this time. It'd only be last year that we'd be able to look at and.
Right, we could still possibly settle something between now and the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Okay. The assessors' office, pardon, the general fund. The general fund assessors' office. Next one up would be the town treasurer's office.
Going back to the assessors' office.
Go right in.
In the, under the, under the mission statement, there were a lot of comments made by the director of assessing regarding where, where we thought assessing loss and where it ought to be, and some of the, you know, the differences might be, and I just wondered if any thought is being given to any of these. I, they're probably not included in the budget. I don't know if they are or not. I mean, there's no way to really know that, but apparently, there are a lot of activities or, there are some opportunities, I guess, for assessing to do a better job or to have better information available, which is what he says in his narrative. And I know, I don't, you can't tell whether any of this is reflected in the budget or not, or if it's something that has to be considered for a later time.
Yeah, I don't know, Jennifer or Brad, Dave might wish to comment.
Is Dave here?
I'm not sure, he's not able to.
I can answer that. What Dave addressed in his mission statement is not addressed in the FY '14 budget, but I will tell you, coming in, these are the issues that I'm looking at, and I'm taking some time and looking at different areas of assessing and started conversations with Dave Bailey. So, no, not in the FY '14 budget, but yes, we are discussing it.
There was a significant request and review by the town manager of, I feel, a significant increase in education in the town assessors' office. It went from about $330 to $3,400, so at least for training.
Yeah, I just see that, yeah.
Okay, next up is town treasurer's office. The next one will be the town collector's office. Any other questions there? No, okay. All right, then we'll move on to the next tab, which is the finance committee. That's a reserve fund.
We always seem to stick with that same amount. I guess it's because it works. Is that? The 325,000, it's been, it's been that amount for a long time.
Yes, I do believe it works, particularly with the FY '14 budget, because we are funding some areas that haven't been funded in the past. Snow and ice, we actually did increase to snow and ice, you will see that. So that kind of alleviates, if you will, on the reserve fund, so it even makes it more healthy now with the 325 than it did before.
Yes.
Just in addition, the Municipal Relief Act that the governor's adopted annually provides tremendous relief at the end of the fiscal year that previously the town didn't have. So without that relief, you would see that reserve fund increase. Hopefully not this year, but in the last several years, that was an advantage.
The legal department?
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
On the, on the professional technical special counsel, the, the number, I guess, is a little bit less than the previous year, but does that special counsel provide for additional legal services to departments, all the departments, I mean, in general? Or is it more specific to maybe one or two departments, or to certain, maybe certain specific occasions when special counsel is needed? Frank is back there, can you?
Sure. Frank, do you want to answer that?
Good evening, Frank Tuffey, Town Counsel. The special counsel budget is almost exclusive with labor counsel. It is used occasionally for other purposes, but 95% of it is for labor counsel.
Next up is the personnel office.
I need my money.
GIS. Actually, back on the information technology.
Mm-hmm.
And this is something I've looked through a number of the budgets. The amount of money we put in for telephone is outrageous, and this is, I think, $22,000 in this line item alone for telephone. And I guess I just don't understand what, what we're paying for. And, you know, I did not add up all communication telephone across the town, but it's a huge item.
Probably cell phones.
Lynn, do you want to answer that, if you can?
It's not covering the internet, because I see that's a different thing that's.
Maybe it can, Vicki can help too. For, the, the phone bills are very complicated, and they come in and then they get spread out within different departments. There's landlines and data lines, and it's sort of like a slush fund. It's sort, you need that for it all comes in, and then it gets distributed to other departments, and accounting does all the work. So actually, I can't even manage, I don't even know, you know, there's usually a big balance in there, but I'm not sure whether they've paid the previous month or that month, and so we, Tom Pucci really takes care of it, but I think we give back a lot at the end of the year, right, Vicki? It's sort of a working fund, if you would. And yes, we do spend a lot on phones, and we work really, really hard to keep that down. We're always counting lines and, and, you know, centrics things and switching providers and stuff like that. But every department pays their own cellphone bill, but it goes in there, and then they split it out, because the bills are so complicated.
Particularly in this one, the 2011, we spent about $20,000 combined telephone/internet. 2012, we spent about $22,000. 2013 and 2014, we're up to $33,000, $34,000. Is that just, is phone service being more expensive?
Yes.
Actually than?
The predictions are that the future cost of landlines will probably stay the same or go down, but the cost of cell phones, it will escalate enormously over the next five years.
The cost of the fact that we're using them more?
The cost of them, generally. The cost of having a cellphone and using a cellphone. No matter who you are, whether you're an individual or a business or whatever, they expect that the cost of cell phones will rise exponentially over the next five years. Let's just.
Well, I feel we've kept our cellphone bills down because we share minutes and stuff, and we frankly use Nextel, which, it used to be very cheap because we do direct connect. Now it's can be sell-to-sell free, but a lot of us are complaining because since the Hurricane Irene, Nextel hasn't replaced a lot of their towers. They're, they're waiting for new Sprint digital towers that are supposed to be here in the summer, and a lot of departments have, you know, had, you know, been upset with the service, but hopefully it'll get better, but, and I think someday with the Open Cape, we might be able to do a lot of voice-over IP phones and, and share service county and things like that. So we really work, it's, believe it or not, it's a huge job by Tom Pucci to manage the But I do think we always give money back.
Well, maybe that's a good point, that maybe at some point in time, I don't know which office, the accounting office or the finance department, could give us some idea of overall in the town, how much we're spending in individual departments and how much we're turning back. Because if they say we're not spending it, let's kind of get a better feel on that as we move forward.
I will get that answer to you, and I'll get back to you on that. We can look that up.
And also, we've been, the county has been informed that when the regional umbrella services system is online, which is expected to be July of this year, that there will, the towns will be able to have phone services, landline services at significant cost reductions. But that's, you know, that's all still in the works. Nothing definitely.
Okay, the next up is the GIS.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, we have Bob Shea, our GIS coordinator, and.
Sounds great.
Bob's prepared to make some comments.
Do you want to wait for the presentation and go through this, or we can do it back now?
We can do the presentation right now. Give us a little break in the middle. We can do the presentation right now. Give us a little break in the middle.
Thank you for allowing me to present on the GIS. The reason I did it was because I did ask for an increase this year.
You've got to do a microphone. We'll get you.
I'll just sit here.
Yeah, we have to hand you the mic.
So, I took the opportunity to put a little something together, because it's been a while since I presented to the Selectmen and the rest of the town. I've run a lot of presentations, but I haven't given them. So, just a little background on what GIS is. It's, it's an automated system of hardware, software, data, and people to store and create. The difference is, it has a geographic component, like most IT systems are just data. This actually has a geographic component to all of its attributes. And that is the distinguishing characteristic, is that it's now a visual. Here's one of my favorite slides from way back when. It's just an overlay of layers to be viewed and queried, which answers many different questions. And each, like I said, each feature has an act, has a corresponding attribute table to it, either built into the layer itself or joined by a database join and then added to the feature. And as we're talking about budgets and performance metrics, one of the things I've always talked through with my colleagues and with the town is, it's not just about the GIS being, the relationship between our fossils and sewer and water, but it takes, for municipal GIS to be effective, it really takes to build a relationship between the departments, because that's, that's how the information gets stored. Once you build a layer, like our water system layer for us is a good example, once that was built, we had all the stuff digitized and put in the system. That's fine. But that stuff changes all the time. So, I've, I have a direct connection with, now it's Mike Morton, it used to be Dick Minis. They're constantly bringing changes for me. Every time a tie card changes or an account changes, or they do work on a gig bell, we are constantly making changes. And that's where it takes every department, same with the Planning Board with zoning, same with the parcels and patrician Dave, water sewer. And that, and that takes a lot of time to, to build those relationships. And my Mission Statement and goal is, is the same every, in what, my main goal is to help other departments do their job in a better, easier way and be more confident the other way they do their job. Here's a little graphic that shows some of the things I do for the different departments. As you see, we have the assessing and that's patrician Dave. I can actually, the other water, the accounts, tie cards, structures, highway department, we create all the plow routes. We update those, we add roads or take roads off. Engineering, we take care of all the drainage, the outfalls, the signage. We get the regulatory list from the state, update it all the time, like Zone 2s, things like that. The wind districts, Board of Appeals, accessory apartments, own businesses. Fly and Dispatch is a big, big one. We have a Fly and Dispatch application, we have a landmark file, and next-generation 911 addresses we're constantly working on. Mortgage through the Hub and Master. And it goes, I go around, people say, what do I do? And I say, I go around the circle and make sure I contact each one of them at some point to make sure that if there's any changes. Do a lot of work with, I track for the shellfish, the eelgrass in the fishing areas, and we do our yearly shellfish maps. And like I said, it's a job just to make it continually operational. I'm always campaigning for, to do another flyover, because I think it's important to maintain our level, our level of GIS that is confidence in it. To make, like I said, to maintain our parcels, street utilities, leveraging contracts. I would like to see more of this with our actual contractors and consultants. Give back a little more whenever they do anything. I'd like to have it come back in our format, not, not a CAD format or something like that, because that takes a lot of time to switch it over. And then leaking our town databases, this is always an issue, but this new application I'm getting is going to make that very easy for me to do. And this is just some of our current uses with assessors, DPW. The building, building is a, is a big one. Also, the Town Council uses us a lot too. Whenever there's a historic thing, we look up through our history, historical aerials, we can check and see what was actually there and what wasn't there by certain years. Now, a little demonstration of what we're actually doing. Now, it used to be, everybody had desk, I used to deliver this in desktop services. By that, I mean, you had to go to each machine, you had to go to each machine and load software, and every time the software changed, you had to go and reload the software. Now, most of my applications are all Internet applications. So, many of you are familiar with the Town, the public website, which is an Internet application. These are now, what I do is I create map services for each of the departments. As you can see, there's 24 of them there. And then I build applications from those. If I click on here, this is what's delivered, in this case, to the Board of Appeals. Now, each one of these will have a different layer, different layers attached to it, and they can call me up. Marie just asked, a few days ago, she asked to have the sewer layer turned on, because somebody was saying that they were, they could hook up to the sewer, and she, there was no way to confirm that, which I, actually, I think it was, there was no sewer there. And then each one has a simple search. And you see, that's 59 Town Hall Square. This gives you all the attribute information for each of the parcel, if you're query. You can also go, zoom in or out. And this is all coming over the web wirelessly from the DPW right now. You can, you can zoom out to the, to the Townwide, go back to your previous, and you can, like I said, search by address, map number, and in this case, special permit. And then of course, go over on this side. You can turn on the different layers. So, each of these, I have 20 different ones. Town with PD. And what's good about this, someone can call me, I have the town with PD, they want the aerial turned on immediately when they came, when it came on. So, I adjust it to what they see when the first comes up, and they just have to search address, because they don't readily have map numbers. Historic view, engineering grade, it's conservation. Conservation also likes the aerial view. As you see this outline, we have the 100-foot buffer around all wetland features as well. So, in the past few years, I've migrated everything from the old desktop to now all Internet sites. And here's our Asset Management Framework, which is also an Internet site. Now, this is a heavy desktop application. If we were actually trying to do this in a desktop application coming wirelessly from the DPW, we wouldn't be able to do it. Because it would just be, it's just the way it's delivered differently through a web application than it is through a desktop application. You only hit, you only send bits of information that you request, but in a desktop application, it sends in everything. Now, here we have just, this is a little different in here. This is our Asset Management System. They're saying here, they can turn on whichever department they're in, they can turn on what they want to see. We actually account for all our entries, and each, each year, we do maintenance on them. We haven't injected these yet. We track all that now through the POX Department. And right now, I just have my, my water system on. This just, I have a legend here. But if you just keep that close, you have more. And then here, your documents. This is the account type right here, automatically linked to the tie card. Work orders. It's a work order at this location. There's a work order for that location. So, each, each account has everything attached to it. So, over the years, we're just building and building a better database of work management, and, and we're starting out on our, excuse me, our Asset Manager. But if we open up a table here for work orders, you can see we have over 13,000 work orders. So, Kathy's doing a good job over there at the DPW, getting all the divisions to participate and maintain their work orders. That's just a little something about our, our Asset Management Framework. And then, the, the new application I'm getting is going to allow me, this is why I've asked for that increase in my operating budget for the yearly maintenance. What this does is it allows, it takes our existing software, our GIS software, and our SQL Systems, SQL Server databases, assessing, municipality, Viewworks, and then also extracts from the top down. And it makes a configurable layer that keeps up with the software, with the GIS software, any changes in that, also keeps up with any changes to the web services, any new web, web changes. They're always changing the languages and what's they're built in and so forth. It'll allow us to have, instead of having our town, our public website built with 50 layers in it, so you have to change it, it'll allow me to create tab layers. So, you're going to get, basically, you get your, you do your property search over here, you have, like I was talking about, you'll have your links to permits, sales, property, and you can switch to aerial view, topography, utilities, zoning, precincts. What this also allows you to do is to mark up. It'll allow you to create markups. So, say the CWMP is working on a project, they'll be able to mark things up and email it to each other and have interactive conversation with the map within, within the group from home. Now, all this, of course, we talk about the Open Cape. Open Cape is going to be a big help to GIS, not only to GIS, not only to the municipal, but it's going to be a huge advantage now for the Cape economically, opening things up for businesses. And there's also, there's also standard links to all these as well. I don't know where this is coming from. But it gives all the code in the background to link to all the other, other live sites, Google, Dang. So, it's going to be a real valuable tool for the public and for, that doesn't seem to be working out. There it is. You know, there's the Amherst Mass, it'll get the street view, right from that address we just got.
This is a one-year increase you're asking for?
This was a, this was a capital project that I, that was approved to buy the software. And it's a $1,500, actually, it's $2,500 maintenance fee each minute. So, I removed $1,000 from my existing, I added $1,500 so I could add.
So, it's an annual $2,500 for this?
Right. So, it brings up my total budget to $2,500. But I think the utility of the, what I'm going to be able to do for the departments and the, and the public is astronomical. For me, I mean, just for me to manage all that stuff for one place, instead of doing each individual website. Now, here's another, this is our, this is, this is just screenshots. This is our dispatch system, our new dispatch system we put in last year. This is the top, this is a chair view, 100 chair view drive. You put that in, and you click Find, and it zoomed right to that location. Down here, you have what has been happening that day, active or cleared, pause that day. Over on this side, the tracks of the equipment, whether it's available out in the call or out of service. And then these little, these things here, behind this, will give you information on this tab. For instance, we're at the hospital. So, we come in here, and now we're on this information tab. It gives the dispatcher's information about the Knox Box location. It scrolls down, it tells, tells where the alarm boxes are, where the radio box are. This scrolls down, there's more information about the location specific to that alarm box. Here's another dispatch. We have, this is in landmarks, not addresses. We have very active landmarks. We have this particular one, it's a bike path, and it's at the 7.3 mile marker, which is right here. So, the dispatcher gets that number, and we have mile markers all along the bike path. Somebody will call up, say they're near mile marker 7.3. The dispatcher will know exactly the quickest route for the emergency vehicle to get there. Here's our other, our other landmarks, right, the alarm boxes. Here's our other, our other landmarks, probably the alarm boxes, eight hundred, so those, every beach has a zoom two layer. Bike path has all the mile markers. Every boat ramp has a location. So if somebody says they're at a specific boat ramp, they don't need an address, they can just zoom to a boat ramp. The road race has all the mile markers. Every golf course in town has every key and hole in there. All the 17 landing zones for Metabank, the mile markers from Route 28 and the ponds. And as well as our landmarks, this is just an example of what we continue to do with the, this is a condo situation. So there is no address for this place. So I went, you know, I went out in the field and I put an address on top of every building, added to the address five, so they know exactly what building they're going to. Here's another one, Susan Lane. There's just an apartment there. As you can see, the house number is 25, that's the parcel number. I went in there, I added Susan Lane as a road because it isn't really a road. And 911 doesn't care. You get a call, you want to know where it is. So we add the road in and we add in the apartments. Here's another good example of that. This is 367 Hoist upon Road. It's Memorial Circle housing for MBL. So when they call up, they're going to give you 27 Memorial Circle, they're not going to give you 311 or Hoist upon Road. And we've done that all over town. Here, we go back here, when you add a call, you'll get this screen. And as I was doing this live, I didn't go much farther than this, but what happens is you click on one of these and you'll get more choices. And what it does in the background, it goes to these tables, those choices, query these tables to bring up what equipment is there for that region. We have all districts in the background by its location or polygon, you'll know, you see the zone ID, what type of alarm, that'll tell you which equipment is available for that particular call, depending on the type of alarm over here. And that's just a.
I have a lot of questions.
Huh?
No, you raise a lot of, I mean, that's amazing.
Well, I just, you know, it's, not often I get to talk about it that much, but we do do a lot of things with a lot of people, so I think it's important that every once in a while, I let you know what I'm up to.
Now, is some of this generated by you or how much of it is generated by the departments themselves who know that this would be something good for them to have?
I guess that we have 20 departments.
Works both ways?
Yeah, it works both ways, exactly. We have our basic website for each department that they tell me the basic layers. And like I said, Shari called up the other day, wasn't called up, she walked over and said that. Can I get the sewer layer on there? She said, sure, you can add the sewer layer on. So I added the sewer layer. Same with Dave down at health, he asked me if I had any data for the base, all the bubblers and infiltration wells and all that stuff. I didn't have, but I called the base and my countervan up there sent me the information and I added it as a layer. So we're constantly, you know, it goes back and forth. That's why the communication between the department heads and myself is so important. And to keep that up, not only just for GIS, but just so they remember that if they don't have something, just ask and I can probably get it for you. We'll find a way to do it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? I assume there is no question on the GIS budget increase?
So you should also volunteer to make a presentation.
That was a pretty good presentation, I got to tie up. Thank you. Next up is affirmative action. I have one question on this. It says, personal services, there's a budget item on there for $42,000. What is that?
Mr. Spivey?
Half a salary, is that it? Half a salary?
Yes.
Okay, so what?
Affirmative action officer.
Half is broken up?
To school pays.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, thank you. Next up, town clerk's office. Planning board, department.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Planning board shows a 10% increase. Is there, can we explain that?
That's a result of the reintegration of that assistant planner position back into planning. That had been split out prior to my arrival.
Conservation, is that right?
No, that's in planning.
Where was the other?
It's the Deb Converse's position.
So does that mean that she's going full-time, half-time?
There's an additional day being added and that is in the planning department budget. That fundamentally represents that percentage of increase. An additional day worth of one employee.
Throughout the course of a year?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Just on the goals in our packet, this is in, this is clear in 2012, just because this is showing where they have come from.
Go ahead.
Just Heather, incidentally, this is just showing their ongoing status of where their goals were in 2012 and how many of them they've completed since then, I guess.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, I guess this would be for Julian. Julian, where in this budget is the money you plugged in to redo their zoning book? To have it, is it not in theirs or is it?
Great question. It's not in this budget because it is a non-recurring expense. It'll be a standalone warrant article for FY14. We bring it forward to the Board of Selectmen and town meeting for FY14. Again, only because it's non-recurring, not part of the standard annual operating budget.
Next one up is the building department. Just for the board certification, I'd be abstaining from this because I am the sealer of weights and measures and I do work out of this department.
I did want to comment on the overtime for the building department. I noticed that it is, it has been increased. In 2011, we didn't have any overtime in the budget at all. 2012 is up to 7,000. I know that the building department does a lot to try to keep that down. I guess we're going to level fund it for this year, but I have concerns to whether there was some room for that, but if the request was 2,000 from the building department, then that's fine.
We think the 3,000 is a manageable level, but a lot of that varies as our building commissioner can attest and is not fully predictable.
Next up is TPW Engineering and Administration. I do have a question on this. I know it's a $74,000 increase and I do realize that we're hiring in an assistant TPW director. However, I thought there was going to be some offsets on that salary from the Parks Department, not hiring a, an assistant Parks supervisor or.
That position has been eliminated, you're quite correct, Mr. Chairman, from the budget. However, that position was not specifically funded in FY14 either. So the actual offsets to which we referred in funding that position for FY13 for a portion of a year, those one times, those are one-time savings from other line items in Public Works that were allocated and approved by a town meeting, but they had to be put into the FY14 budget because again, they were not from that eliminated position because that was not funded in FY13. So that's the reason for that partial increase representing part of an annual salary.
Okay. Any other questions there? Snow and ice. I do have a question on snow and ice. I know we always under-budget snow and ice, but has there been a year in recent history that we've ever spent $150,000, I mean, under $150,000? We might need to set up the mic again though, for doing that. Ray, we're going to have to grab the mic.
Yeah, we're going to have to bring this over.
None that I'm aware of in recent years.
Okay.
We've always spent more than that.
I mean, even last year when we had very typically slow, non-snowy winter, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. Waste management facility. I have a question here and the question is, well, no, wait, I'm sorry, it is the same. I apologize. Solid waste collection. It appears that, oh, okay, that's right. Just roughly over $100,000 increase. Is that an increase in the contract or an increase in the disposal?
I also have a question.
Which line item are we referring?
Well, I'm looking at the entire, the entire item.
$85,000 in the rubbish contract.
Right.
$50,000 in the trash hauling.
Right, most of it, most of it is in the haul.
Is there an escalator in that contract or we just?
Yes.
Okay.
That means if the fuel goes up, we?
There's two escalators. One could be an escalator, de-escalator, meaning fuel. If it goes up, it will go up.
Did we recently have to pay something like $80,000 to them or might?
Yes.
We did?
Yes. And the contract itself, each year, the contract has a built-in escalator, so it automatically goes up for the first two line items, which is the rubbish contract as well as the recycling contract.
How much longer do we have on the rubbish contract?
A little less than two years, but we also have two one-year options for renewal.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Wastewater Utilities Administration.
I have a question on that.
Go right ahead.
This has to do with electric steam?
For running the plant?
And whether? Question about protocol is, I see that the request was for $220,000 and I guess that was saying that the, assuming that the turbines are not running, that the department head wanted to cover the electrical expenses on that and that the managers were, choice was to bring that to $100,000. At what point do we enter into discussion as to what we feel about that or is this appropriate time to weigh in?
Well, I would think that that would be all part of the process in us coming up with a solution to the problem and some kind of supplemental budget if we move forward with a solution to the problem with the consensus billing group. That would be my personal opinion, but I'm surely open to any other suggestions. I mean, you don't budget for something that you don't know you're going to need at this point in time. But if it's open to discussion, this is when we discuss it, so.
Can I just ask a question on this sheet we received? The O and M costs at a level funded at almost $121,000 a year, what does that actually cover? Is that, because I see under that repair contingency, 15,5 a year, electrical equipment inspection, you know, is all this on?
That's actually different than this item right here. This is just the electrical power needed to run the wastewater treatment plant.
I understand that, but I was also asking how this may tie into, this is cash obligation.
That line would relate specifically to the renewable energy budget.
Right.
And that 120 is an estimate of what it might cost, so projection prepared for the town.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Renewable energy. Is this what we're talking about here, Heather?
Yep.
Next up is the tree ward. We'll move to public safety, the police department. I'll say this, as I did say last year, they know it's quite hard to do, but both in the police and the fire, we do have openings and it behooves us as a community to try to fill the positions we have so that we can't continue, we can't go back to town meeting and ask for folks to fund positions, additional positions until we can place people in the positions we currently have. So I know it's a long training process, but it's important not only that we become fully staffed in all of these departments, but it surely helps in the overtime budgets as well. And I know it's a tough learning process. It's a tough curve because it takes some time to get either an officer on in police or fire, but it's an appropriate time of year to be able to encourage you both as chiefs of the public safety to be able to work as hard as we tend to get folks in the academies and move forward. Okay. No other questions about police? I did have one question and that's the question about the request was 741,000 for overtime and we only funded $571,000. It's a couple hundred thousand dollar discrepancy and I'm going to look to see if we requested it, how we're going to be able to maintain and stay within the amount if we didn't fund
If you recall, probably about three years ago, we cut $200,000 off the all the time budget and got us around the $530,000 range. The last couple of years, it's been about $200,000 in the red each year. And until we put that back in, we can probably expect it to be in the red each year, even though we've been fortunate enough to be putting some new, refill the positions that have been cut too, that we stopped hiring through attritions. So it's going down each year. But this year, I kept, I requested the 200,000 because that's what we seem to consistently be going over the 500,000 mark to more like 700. This past year, we're expected to be, this current year in FY13, we expect to be 143 over what we're allotted this year.
Okay. And it appears? And it appears that you have five positions that are funded that are unfilled, though, right?
Exactly, yes. Six. We're putting six on January 28th.
Six on January 28th.
There'll be a process, though, as you stated earlier, getting them in the academy and getting them trained.
And do we have slots for those firefighters in the academy or no?
We have four scheduled for July and two for fall and two for September. Unfortunately, that's the earliest weekend.
So, what happens between January 28th and July? What do they do?
We train them, and we do an in-house training program and try and get them designated, depending on their experience level of becoming manpower, which will then help us with the overtime. But sometimes, some are before the academy, sometimes they're after. Last time we put on new folks, we started their first day was the day of the academy and worked out. But we're not the only community that's having issues getting people in these academies.
So, is there any liability on our part to be able to use them as functioning firefighters without having gone through the academy?
Maybe.
Okay.
We're in the process now of working out with Barnstable County Fire Academy so we can get them to do some live fire training so we feel much better. We looked at sending them to a part-time firefighter, one and two program while they're doing their training, but it's still contractual that they have to attend that 12-week course at the Mass Fire Academy.
Okay.
I just have a question. Like Lauren Foshman, are you able to take laterals? And do you advertise for them? Do you encourage that or...
No, we are, but no, we have not.
And a question for the town manager on this. Looks like there's been a request for two additional positions that you're recommending. We not fund at this time?
Three.
Three?
We were requesting three. One is through attrition and two, if you don't mind me answering, I'm sorry. And two, one is from a firefighter because he was gone, been gone since the, I think, '07 when we stopped hiring people. And the other two are from the unfunded ones. When we're back in our six, two pro, they got us eight additional positions, and we hired two each year, and these remaining two are the two that have been on our docket for the years we haven't been funded. So, if we got a total of three, we'd be up to 100% at our main level.
So, as soon as you fill all those positions, you come back and ask us, and we'll look to get you some more positions. Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your explanation. Department of Marine Environment. I think it's appropriate for the...
Mr. Chairman, emergency preparedness.
Oh.
I mean, in the academy, it's a relatively...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't. Emergency preparedness. Anyone have any questions on that?
No.
Department of Marine and Environmental Services.
We do have a presentation on that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Good evening. I know it's getting late, so I will have a very brief presentation unless you have questions. I know you've been briefed in this process, you have the organizational chart, but Heather will operate that for me. Before I get too far into the brief presentation, I do wanna bring to your attention and thank Chuck Markinson. He's been involved in this process from the beginning, and I wouldn't be here today and we wouldn't be moving forward with this if he weren't very supportive from when we first proposed it. So, I'd like to publicly thank him. And also, Julie and Heather and Denise have worked many hours. You know, it seems like this is something that is easy to do, but there are a lot of pieces to this puzzle, and actually, we're still working on some of the, as far as the union negotiations, so we're getting close, but it's a lot of work, and those people deserve a lot of credit for it. Just some quick background, the Harbor Masters Department and the DNR have worked very closely for many years. Some of you know, some of you don't know. We have relied on the enforcement division of the DNR whenever we needed it. They've always been there. They've done ride-alongs on our boats on a pretty frequent basis. So, we have, it's not a new concept. In fact, I'll show you a little further down. You know, we're not reinventing the wheel by doing this year. The most of the departments, in fact, I was thinking about it today, on the Cape, I don't think there are any standalone DNR and Harbor Master departments left. They've all been either merged between those two or they've gone to other mergers such as police department. So, this is something that Town of Barnstable has done. Our merger's actually modeled a little bit more after Town of Yarmouth, but just recently, the Town of Plymouth is merging their Harbor Master with their environmental division. So, it's happening, will happen here, but it's also happening in other places as well. Oh, and I should mention, too, that the timing, one of the reasons we move forward now was because we very rarely in either one of these departments have retirements. Mark Patton retired a year and a half ago, and my deputy Harbor Master, Bill Palm, just recently retired this October, giving us an opportunity to move forward with this that we might not otherwise have. Some of the goals of moving the department and what we're hoping to see is obviously one of the goals of the water selectmen is reporting to the town manager, but also reporting within the department, streamlining that chain of command. We're also looking to fulfill one of your large priorities this year, which is the beefed-up enhancement of our in-house shellfish propagation. Remember, we had a supplemental at the Fall Town Meeting, and we have just hired a fisheries tech, and I'll get into that in a minute, but one of the important things I wanted to bring to you tonight was the overall budget for the Harbor Master and DNR last year, or fiscal '13, I should say, was 826.580. We're proposing it will drop to 813, which is a 2% reduction, doesn't seem like a whole lot if you just look at it, but you have to also remember that that includes funding of the two positions that the town's been looking for for quite a while now. One is the fisheries, and the other would be a natural resource tech, which I'll talk about a little bit in one of the programs coming up, but that would, that resource tech would come on after July 1st. Fisheries tech is already onboard.
On the 826, the packet that we received had a total of 748,000 between the two. Is there a line I'm missing to get?
That might have been an old packet without the fall. I'm not sure. Jennifer can check, but...
Or maybe that's current as opposed to...
The fall supplemental might not be in that. I'm not sure. I would guess that that would make up the difference.
All right. Thank you.
One of the goals also is administrative support for the DNR. They have never had any clerical staff. Our, one of the goals of this organization is to provide them with that. Our clerical person will be taking, we're proposing to go up to 30 to 37 and a half hours, but that extra seven and a half hours obviously will be the additional workload that she'll be feeling for the DNR division. And as far as their, what they can bring to the table for us, we have relied for many, many years on our seasonal staff for a lot of management decisions because we didn't really have any choice. We had to. We're hoping that that won't be necessary. We can de-emphasize the seasonal staff as far as management roles and transfer a lot of those responsibilities to the year-round staff coming over from the DNR. Next slide just gives you a very quick breakdown of the programs and the organizational chart. The biological service is going to be basically the fisheries tech, the new natural resource tech, and the volunteers. The my old deputy position is still necessary, but not in the role of administrator anymore because those functions will be taken over by the deputy chief of the department. We do need a year-round maintenance person, so that position is proposed to be downgraded and just handle all the maintenance that essentially Bill Palm did. That was his role for the last five or six years was full-time maintenance person. And then, on the other side, is basically still the marina and administration and enforcement with a little bit on both sides, and that's environmental law enforcement as well as boating law enforcement, et cetera. Now, I didn't know how in-depth you wanted to get into the actual programs. I did do one of each to give you an idea. As you know, we are in the year two of a four-year revitalization of the inner harbor, bulkhead, and marina. We did finish up the main marina last year, or yeah, 2011, we added 29 new slips. Been very successful. We've gotten rave reviews from the people that use the new marina, but that's the good news. The bad news is that our other four, other three bulkheads in the harbor are basically in the same condition. They were all built at the same time, and all of them failed, failing at about the same time. We're currently in construction to repair the Tides Bulkhead, and then, as this shows, the 2013 and 2014, we move ahead with repair hopefully of the Robbins Road Bulkhead, which also has town slips, and then the Simpsons Landing, which is the only commercial landing next to the clam ship. Next is the law enforcement, and this is changing a little bit, as I said, because we'll be relying a little bit more on the year-round staff of the DNR department. The law requiring training, Chapter 10219 significantly changed in 2009. There are expensive training requirements that it's not practical for the town to invest in seasonal staffing. So, again, de-emphasizing some of the enforcement of the seasonal assistant Harbor Masters, and that will be picked up by DNR staff. However, we will have to get those staff members trained in the new requirements of the Harbor Master Training Council. We've already actually started that process and registration, get them involved. You know, all of those people have been working on the water with us for, as I said, many, many years, so it's not going to be hard for those individuals, and then we won't have to move the seasonals into that training or incur the expense associated with that. This is the new biological community service program that encompasses the new shellfish technician, which was just hired. Just to give you an idea of the quality of the person, we got to take that position. He holds a master's in environmental science and public affairs and a bachelor in environmental management. He's done all of those things, including working for the National Marine Fishery Service and National Forest Service, and that's not only just shellfish, but also he has finfish experience. So, we're very much looking forward to him coming onboard. As you know, the propagation budget was enhanced at the Fall Town Meeting. The FY14 budget brings it back down in the range of what the license fees are bringing in, but this is a kickstart of the program to get us to where we want to be in a very short amount of time. And also, we'll be proposing, I think, maybe it's Monday night, the DNR will be proposing some commercial licensing changes, which will hopefully, over a few years when it's fully implemented, one, reduce the amount of commercial diggers, but also put it at a sustainable level so that the resources in bad times aren't depleted quickly as they have been in the last couple of years. This also includes the hiring of the resource tech, which would be effective after July 1st. He will be the land steward for all open space for the town the town operates, including conservation land. Right now, the 300 committee has some part-time people filling that void and filling that void for town property as well, but this is what this individual will be primarily doing, working with the GIS department and also developing, we're hoping to develop an education program to use at the schools and just a lot of things with the open space, where we have a lot of the open space in town, but never really had anybody overseeing it on a regular basis. And then, of course, ultimately, as time permits, we will be surveying and GIS-ing the trails and anything else that we can do, we can work with GIS on, including ATV trails and et cetera on all the open spaces that we have. And then, finally, another thing that we'll be working with Bob on is we've came to our attention lately, I know the police have had a few incidents in the past couple of months of having to track down horses that have gotten away from their owners, and it became apparent that the town doesn't have, really have a comprehensive listing of where they are, and we don't have the comprehensive listing of the ones that are registered with the town as required by the Health Department 83-2. So, one of the goals of that division will be to bring that up to standard, get them all in the GIS so that the police, fire, and animal control, when an issue like that comes up, will have access to the information and be able to track down the owners of them when they get out. And animal control laws have changed effective this year, so we'll be requiring some new training for the animal control division. And that's as quick as I can do it, and we'll be having to answer any questions.
I think it's important to note that we've got roughly $62,000 in there for propagation this year as well?
62, yes. And that's about what the commercial licenses bring in.
Can you expand a little bit what the fisheries, part-time fisheries technician would be doing?
The fisheries technician is full-time. That's the one that was just hired.
The other?
The natural resource. He'll be the, one of Heather's goals for a long time, is actually getting somebody to manage the open space in the town, maintain the trails, do the brush, anything that the, you know, obviously, the large thing would have to still be referred to the Parks Division, but maintaining of any of the infrastructure on the town-owned open space. Again, one of the big goals of that individual and the department would be an education incentive to get to the schools. A lot of the signage, you know, post these areas with signage, informational kiosks to show people that, you know, we do have a lot of open space out there and just people aren't aware of it and how to access it.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Falmouth School Department. I did want to make one comment here. The request was for 3%, and we gave them the, well, the town manager put in the budget 2.25%, which left $324,000 that was unfunded for what their request was. However, if we looked at the health insurance increase that the school department got this year over last year's health insurance, was a $334,000 increase. So, in fact, if we were to look at dollar for dollar, we did fund 3% to the school department overall budget, $334,000 coming on the health insurance act. Okay. Upper Cape, go ahead. Yep.
And is that $334,000 relate to the 9% increase this year?
Yes.
Is that what that is?
Correct.
It's not related to claims, it's just related to premiums.
It is, and remember, it's artificially low because of the mitigation fund, which is not in there.
Great.
So, in another year, it would be a much higher number.
Okay. Next is Upper Cape Regional Volk. Clinic and nurses. Council on Aging. Veteran Services. Disability Commission. Human Services. Falmouth Public Library. West Falmouth Library.
I think we should comment on the additional request and recommendation the town manager for the West Falmouth Library in response to their upgrading to clams fully this year. I applaud the town manager for continuing to fund that as requested for that.
Okay. Woods Hole Public Library. The Recreation Committee. Beach Committee. Bike Ways Committee. Retirement. I did want to make a comment that that was a $500,000 increase this year. Is, do we have any handle on why that increased so drastic?
Well, we did inquire about that, Mr. Chairman. It was a significantly larger number than we had initially anticipated. I think perhaps Jennifer can comment on that further.
Yes, I believe about six months ago, they went and they had an actuarial evaluation, which they do every two years, which kind of, it looks at the numbers of, you know, your investment, your unfunded liability, and so that spiked, it increased to about $500,000 for this year, and we do have a projection, and that will probably continue to be increased before the retirement system.
Increase?
Really, the valuation, and we're in the, I'm sorry, we're in the third year of, I believe in 2008, where the market really dipped, we needed to make up that time in like three to five years. So, we're in the third year of making that up. So, you might see an increase in 15 to the same extent, but then hopefully it will drop off just a little bit. But it's always hard to tell because you do the valuations every two years.
I did see this pass... I did see this past year that they voted a 3% increase to all retirees. Is that included in this number? Is that, does that happen?
Yes, I believe it probably would be, yes.
Okay. And that seems to be a little bit higher than what inflation is and a little bit higher than what we're settling with union contracts in the community. Is there a reason for that?
I don't have that answer right now. I will be, the town accountant sits on the retirement board, and I could get that information for you, I just don't have that at this time.
I can tell you, I sit on the Barnstable County Retirement Board, and the state legislature allowed retirement boards, it has to be done by legislation, retirement boards cannot make these decisions on their own. And they allow retirement boards to increase, it's called the COLA, for current retirees, and they could either do it in a one lump sum increase of 3% one year, or 1%, 1%, 1% over a three-year period. So it was up to the retirement board how they chose to do it. And the other thing too is, you know, as Jennifer was saying, is that the investment income on retirement systems has been considerably less because of the market, and that, I think, is another reason why these numbers are a little higher this year.
So are you saying that that increase is dictated by the legislature? Oh, it is. Okay. Great. Okay. Unemployment.
And by the Parrot Board, which is a public employee retirement corporation.
Fringe benefits, life insurance. Other employee benefits. Long-term excluded debt. Long-term unexcluded debt. Now, I do have a question here. There's an increase of 1.676 million. Can you explain that?
In the short term?
Yeah.
Unexcluded. It's the Community Preservation Act. They, in the accounting system, just for the budgetary purposes, it wasn't, I think it was put in a separate part of the accounting system, but we put it in the unexcluded debt this year. So that's the increase. It was just in a separate part of the budget last year, so that's...
So you merged it over to this?
Yes.
Okay. And last is a short-term unexcluded debt. And then I'll open it up to any basic questions that the board has. That concludes all of the specific budget departments.
I have a very basic general question, maybe even, I just was wondering, Jennifer, at what point have you begun to start getting involved in the procurement process with all departments, things like that, at some point?
I'm starting to get involved in it slowly, but I am getting involved in it. Some questions have come my way, have opened up a price proposal for the library, and I met with the library director today, conversations with Don Harper, but I'm getting involved slowly.
Okay. Thank you.
Would we be looking to make a motion to move this to the Finance Committee now or on Monday evening of next week?
On Monday evening. It will be on your agenda for Monday to take action. If the board so determines.
All right. Any other comments from the board? I'd like to thank all the department heads for coming tonight. I know it was a little extra step for each and every one of you. We appreciate your input. We appreciate all the work that you put into this. It shows that on behalf of the financial team and working together, we're able to stay within budget and be able to make some small increases in services in this community and work forward. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Do I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second. All those on the table?
Aye.
Close. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Gifford.
And I'm Pat Thatcher. We're members of the team at Sotheby's International Realty in Falmouth. And Falmouth has been so busy with real estate.
Yes, it has. I've been so busy, I haven't had time to color my hair.
Margaret, that's way too busy.
I know.
Still, it's a great time for buyers because interest rates remain at historic lows.
And it's a great time for sellers because the inventory is so low.
Hmm, so that's increasing demand.
Yes, it is.
Don't you love Falmouth?
Remember, WC Communications is your printing team. We are calm and cool under pressure. You can call us at 508-563-7366 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303.